Alright, okay. So there being five planning commission members here in a big 703 who will call the November meeting in Norbert planning commission order. They're finding us here tonight. Commissioner Brower, Commissioner Hiong, Commissioner Boyd is Commissioner Crum. And I'm here, Commissioner Cornwell is excused, he's out of town. And Commissioner Godini is joining us by Zoom. And our alternate is also potentially going to be joining us by Zoom. She has a conflict this evening. So we are five here in this room tonight. We're also joined by our colleagues from Montgomery County Clinic Commission as well. So thank you very much for that. And I can't tell, but is anyone else online besides Kevin Walsh? No, okay, so Kevin Walsh is here on behalf of the Borough and no members of the and Jim Spear is a member of the public who's attended. So here we are. Alright, so our agenda tonight, let's try and make it brief folks. Save our energy, let's save our energy for December and January. I will give an update, I do have a few things I'd like to tell you about. And those of you who are here, who are working on the active transportation plan with the Park Semester Plan, might call on you to say a few words if there's any news about that. But I'll give you a minute to think about that. We'll approve our minutes. And then the main item in our agenda is to review one last time the proposed conditional use requirement related to building design. We discussed this last month and I took pretty much comments into consideration. And I've provided a new draft for you to look at. And then a continued discussion about use definition updates, which our colleagues from MCPC will lead us through through time. I've asked Michael Godini to introduce a new topic for consideration for next year about some issues to look at in terms of residential zoning. But not to start talking about it, but just to sort of say this is potentially going to be on our agenda next year. So that is our agenda. And let's try and read through it quickly. Alright, so as to my update, the elephant in the room that's not here is 230 Haverford Avenue. A application was received, I think in October 16th or 17th. After a little bit of back and forth, the Borough accepted that application, which means that the process for reviewing that project has started. After much, I'd have to say, reminding, the Borough has actually posted the application on the website and published a schedule for review. You can find it on the plans page of the Borough's website. It's a special page, you can go to 230 Haverford, I printed out the introduction to that, which includes the schedule. You can pass these around if you take one, have this for your records. But it's important to say that our first review of the app and it is a, there are three applications. An application for preliminary and final review, all in one batch. There's an application for conditional use. There's some debate as to whether there needs to be another conditional use. I've raised that question for the staff to consider. And there's also an application, demolition application with the Harv. So those are three processes that get set in motion with this. We'll have our first meeting to discuss this on December 4th and the Harv will have its first meeting to discuss this on December 11th. A conditional use hearing has been scheduled before it brought our council. The idea is that both the planning commission and the Harv can provide recommendations to council, not so much about whether we recommend approval of the project, but recommendations about any conditions we would like council to request and develop. And so we look at it in December, we send a report to council that informs the conditional use hearing. That hearing occurs, there are or are not conditions agreed to. Then we will again meet on January 3rd. Now, I'll get back to that again because that's not a typical date we meet. And that's the meeting which we would develop a recommendation for the Borough. This assumes that everything moves at a regular pace and papers are in place and all that. The next day, January 4th, the Borough Council would have a workshop meeting. And then on January 18th, the Borough Council would vote. We do have, I think, one more cycle in meetings that this can run over before the 90-day clock runs out. But this is the schedule that the Borough has established. Couple of things to note about this.
Do you know offhand what date that 90 days is offhand?
I don't know offhand, but it would be 90 days after December 4th.
After December 4th.
Wait, no, it's 90 days after, 30 days after our so it's 90 days after November 15th or something like that. So it'd be the middle, it'd be the middle of February. It's convoluted. The clock runs 90 days after either the first planning commission meeting or 30 days after the application, whichever comes first. So it's the middle of February. And that's assuming there's no extension. Couple of things to flag compared to the application we saw earlier in the spring and summer. This is a different application, actually. It takes into account one more building, which is the building between the old Mavs building, it's the building between American Finley Market and Philosophy. The perennially unleashed space that is now part of their plan, that building. And the building on the corner of Haverford and Norbert and the little gym building are not part of this application. That doesn't mean they may not be developed, it just means they're not part of this application. For example, they may seek just simply to develop them as a right without any other any process. I don't know what their intentions are. But they are not part of what we are looking at, we are only looking at.
So are they, are they on a separate lot or remain on separate lots?
Yes, yes, so the consolidation of the lot does not include those, includes everything else. That's a good point. But yeah, so that is what we're looking at. You can look, I believe I circulated the application materials. We received, they're pertinent to the conditional use and to the preliminary review. The Harv application has far more information. It has renderings and far more design details, it has materials, boards and all that. So you can look at that by downloading that from the Borough, from the Borough webpage.
So are you transgiving hard copies?
I need to say, because we're speaking in public. In a burst of wisdom, the Borough staff told the applicant they could waive the requirement for hard copies. And I pointed out that we just reviewed our SALDO. We left that requirement in and we left it in for a reason.
And discussed exactly how many copies that needed.
We, and I had to, so today, the Borough staff requested printed copies from the public.
Very good.
First, they said, we want to save paper. And I had to point out why we asked for this, right? Then they said, well, it's a lot of work for the Borough staff. And I said, the Borough staff doesn't have to do it, it's the applicant's job. So quite frankly, the processing of this application has not been, shall we say, done tightly. So unfortunately, we don't have any paper copies yet. But for some odd reason, even if SALDO requires 10, they only ask for eight. I don't know why, I don't know why. I'm saying this to the public, the Borough staff decides they can't follow the rules that we've established for processing applications. They're there in black and white, they're there for a reason and they were just approved months ago. So I don't, I don't know why Borough staff can't follow them. Anyway, we'll get them and I'll let you know. So are there any questions about any of that?
I'll just note that we have still not received a review request, but we have to follow up on that.
You have, yeah. Okay.
It has not been submitted for county really.
As part of the application, they did provide that paperwork and payment to the Borough, whatever's required. And I thought that, I thought that Alan did refer to that. I thought I had a copy of an email where he referred it to you guys. He sent us a copy of it, but has yet to be received.
So there's, yeah, there's a process. He has a login and he has to fill out, he has to log into our system and upload.
He just emailed it?
Yeah, that doesn't count.
Okay.
Emailing us though doesn't count.
Kevin, if you're listening, could you please convey to Alan that the application was not submitted to Montgomery County Clinic Commission appropriately for review?
We'll do, I'll make a do to that for Alan.
Thank you.
We can follow up with them also.
Yeah. Because we've lost now three and a half weeks of that application being here.
Can, can anything be done to ensure that we can get the various reports on the application more than an hour before the meeting?
We're trying very hard. I believe we have been expecting to get them Friday, but when the applicant decided to postpone things a month, I assumed the Borough staff came up with another schedule and I will do my best to get them, you know, to let the leadership of the Borough know that we need those before the last second.
Yeah, Eric and I, you were right on Todd. We were going to get them out there Friday. It kind of bought us some more time once we saw they were delayed. So you should have them two weeks before the meeting, the next meeting, which would be plenty of time.
Well, is the expectation that the exhibits are going to be exactly the same as they are now?
I have no idea. Just part of this is iterative. I'm sure Kevin and Eric have been flagging things that want to be corrected and they may update it and send, I have no idea what to expect. I know that Eric is working with them to flesh out the stormwater materials, which were really not provided at all. So that will be different from what we saw before, that will be additional material. I don't know what else Eric and Kevin will come up with and I think we should just wait to see, you know, what happens with that. So the Boroughs requested that we meet on January 3rd to review this. Now, normally we meet the first Monday, the first Monday is January 1st. January 2nd, if I'm not mistaken, is the Borough's reorganization meeting. That council always has to meet, I mean, every other year at the beginning of the year after an election to swearing the new members and point committees and all that. That has to happen first. And then we would meet January 3rd. So I've been asked to confirm with you that Wednesday, January 3rd, would be possible. And in addition, I took the liberty, since last year we ran into kind of a glitch in scheduling our meetings. We don't have to schedule next year's meetings today, but I would like to schedule them in December. So I'm going to give you all printed copy of the proposed schedule. And I'd like you to make sure that you cite any errors, conflicts, things we need to avoid. Yeah.
At this time, I feel it is upon me to just say that, given the fact that my last agreement of sale on a house fell through, I'm hesitant to say this, but we have signed another agreement of sale for a house that is outside of Norbert boundaries. And we are planning, and I use the term loosely, we are planning to move in December. So as for January, it is unknown, the state of things. But I would just ask that you maybe put that on the radar.
It's getting hard to make that annex in the Borough Black that timeline.
But I'll tell you, if it happens and I'm, you know, sort of confident, well, I very much look forward to working with all of you across Vinewood Ave. To make that all maybe a very unified, agreeable, mutually agreeable.
Well, we wish the best for you, no matter what it winds up being.
Thank you.
You know, you're trying to find better quarters for your family.
Thank you.
In the meantime though, could you take a look at the dates and just let us know?
That's in case.
Last year, we had a problem because there were a lot of conflicts with like federal holidays, other holidays. And so let's, next month, I'd like to settle on the calendars to take this and come back in December with your thoughts. It was very hard to do by email, so that's why I'm doing this a month early. But does anyone have any conflicts with January 3rd?
I don't.
So we can at least tell the Borough staff that we can schedule our January meeting on January 3rd. And I'll advertise that with everything else. And so we could expect to meet January 3rd. Hopefully, we'll meet for our second review, we'll see how things go in December. Alright, so you have this, which I will post in the Norbert Planning Commission webpage. And you have our potential schedule. I believe that covers everything I went to discuss about 230 Haverford at this point. Unless there's any other questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's not out of turn. If the developer, the applicant receives permission to demolish, is there any way we can have a completion bond or some kind of line of sight to make sure it doesn't end up like a crater? Is like, in Philadelphia, there's been a number of issues where that has happened.
Yes.
Well, I have no idea how that works legally, but that is certainly something we can flag in our next meeting when we're recommending the council conditions. They might want to put on the approval, like that could be a condition.
Is that something staff could advise on or I'm just curious if there's how we can avoid that, yeah?
I'm not aware of anything, I think that would be a John question, honestly.
Yeah, how about if I refer that question to the solicitor after our meeting? Next month would be the month to put that on the table and make that recommendation. So when the conditional use hearing occurs, it can be something a council will ask for.
Yeah, I just want to know if it's possible.
Yes, we can, we can look at it. Okay, any other questions about 230 Haverford? Alright. Okay, that is all I have on my own announcements. But I would like to ask if anyone who's either working on the active transportation plan or the Park Semester Plan would like to, is there any update that you would like to bring to our attention today?
I can streak towards the parks plan if you want me to.
Sure.
So we had a, we had a meeting last month where we took in feedback regarding the scope of work and recommended to council to utilize that scope of work for an RFP process to find a consultant to help with the parks planning process. As y'all, like we already know, it was a, a month of or a couple of weeks of change, I think, in the Borough. And so I know that on our end, we were still kind of waiting to hear back from DCNR, which is the state agency through which we have the funding to do that planning process, as to whether the scope of work that we had drafted fit with their needs as the funding agency. We're going to be meeting on, a couple of us on the study committee are going to be meeting on that this week to try to get a sense from DCNR. And then in terms of the, there were a number of questions at the last planning commission regarding Simone Collins. And I had spoken with a couple of folks to try to see if, to answer the question that had come up as to whether Simone Collins's scope of work had ever been completed regarding the prior work they had done on Town Square Station Circle. The folks that I had spoken with at the Borough weren't entirely sure. They had the impression that it had been completed, but I hadn't gotten a definitive answer to that. And since it was a little bit hectic, I didn't kind of press because I, folks were dealing with a lot of things. But I will follow up again and see if we can get a firm answer to that question since I know it had come up at the last planning commission. So we kind of, that's kind of the update. We're kind of in a little bit of a holding pattern, waiting to hear back from the state on the scope of work. Obviously, the RFP process, you know, will not occur until then. But that's where things stand right now in a little bit of a holding pattern. Not much of a major update since last month.
Thank you.
Active transportation plan. We're, we just, or Laura Marion has wrapped up their design for the survey. We're going to be sending that in the coming days to the respective bodies to help fill it out and provide some information. Basically talks about where you like to walk and bike to, where you want to walk and bike to. And also as a pinpoint map of, these are the areas we feel or these are the areas that some people feel they could be improved or different little aspects, using a map based function as well, so.
Was there a survey circulated to Norbert residents? Because I thought we got one.
There is an online survey right now.
Yeah.
We're going to be sending it to the people. We're going to be sending it so we can go out with newsletters.
Okay, so is our survey different from the other?
No, it's the same, it's the same survey. It may have something to do with the, I'm trying to remember the name of but it may, there was another transportation survey.
You have the GVF one?
Yeah, the GVF one, so.
That was only open for like two weeks.
No, there's a, there's an active transportation plan that can be sorted online, right?
Okay, yeah, it's online, it's just we have to send it up through newsletters and community.
Okay, I guess since you were still finishing it, not that way. We got them.
Then I guess, then I guess it went up through the right bodies.
Where did it come from? Just curious.
I would like to look at my computer if you'd like.
Like, like Laura Marion would, Laura Marion would.
We could host, we sent that.
Oh, Laura Marion sent that.
Well, we could post the link on the Norbert webpage.
Yeah, because I haven't seen it.
That's what our next pack is. I was out late last week and Laura Marion just ran through our stuff up, so.
Maybe at the end of the video, I'll look it up. Okay. And what is the overall track for this in terms of time?
So probably by end of winter, we're going to be getting, once we have like a lot of input back, we're going to start doing more, more meetings or more like stakeholder, or also going to be doing some stakeholder outreach. Just kind of getting a sense of what people want, what people think needs to be done and where. And then start to coalesce the plan around that, so.
Are you ready for questions about either of these planning processes? I realize there was one other thing I wanted to update you all on. I'm searching for it, I can't remember, but here it is. The planning assistance contract between Norbert Brown and Montgomery County Planning Commission is up for renewal. It's a three-year contract. And so I think the Borough's intent is to renew this contract. And we've had an informal conversation, we being Tim and Chloe. Are you there?
I'm there.
Tim?
Eric.
Our boss, Eric.
Eric, okay. And I and Alan beginning to kind of kick around ideas. And what I've suggested is that it's really inappropriate to build a scope of work around tasks at this point. We should let the new council be seated and let the council express its priorities to the planning commission once they're elected and once they're seated in office. And so Fred has agreed early in the year, maybe February, that we sort of spend some time in a workshop with the new council talking about what the priorities should be for the planning commission to be looking at. That's a planning, right? I don't think it's right for us to lock in a series of tasks. We're going to have new council members. And so we can look forward to that happening early in the year. And maybe if we don't, we'll figure out, we can have some time to prepare for that, maybe in February, we can do that. But if any of you have ideas that you think ought to be on the agenda, that would be a process for bringing them up and having them. We also, we did agree though, and I think Tim maybe was right, it's a good one that there should be a scope that every two years, we go through that process after the council reorganizes to make sure that the planning commission touch bases with council members about what their priorities are and what they think we should be working on. So that we don't ever get too far ahead of what council's interested in working on and seeing and whether they're willing to support. So we can look forward to that early in the year. So thank you for your work on that. Okay, Adam has just sent links to the active transportation plan survey. Look at that, my phone, my computer's going bing bing, I can't find my email. Alright, so let's move on then, if there's no further. Oh, approval of the minutes, that's the last part of section one of the agenda. So I hope I sent out the minutes with that package, okay. And Michael Godini has come up with one correction to the minutes. Michael, I believe, Michael produced the minutes and now it's done. Sorry, I was pulling your leg, Michael. A correction to make, just a few extraneous words got in there that he would like to be, have removed. It was a, I think it was a reference to, Chloe said something, but it doesn't say what he said. It's just like leftover language, so we'll get rid of that. Are there any, are there any comments, corrections about the minutes that anyone would like to make? Think about it, okay. If not, then could I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended, presented and amended by Michael's email to me?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Out of favor of approving the minutes?
Hi.
Any votes? Michael, how do you vote on that? Do you vote to approve the minutes?
He's muted.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted, yes, I love the minutes, the great.
Uh, Michael, we don't have a meeting on one, on a screen.
Yeah.
Like the John McCain can't see it. Um, no, thumbs up doesn't work, we have to hear it.
Gotcha.
Okay, alright then, so let's move on to the next item. First item of business on our agenda, which is a continued conversation about a potential condition we would like to recommend to council regarding building design. Most of your comments that you made from my notes and from the minutes are in here. I should also say that after our meeting, Tim Rubin called me about this. He's generally supportive, if I may. I encouraged him actually to speak at the planning commission meeting he was attending. But he called me next week, he's generally supportive, but he did have some suggestions about how to make it work better, which I've actually incorporated into this draft. Those were sent, the key one was, two key points I recall from our conversation. One was, he felt that apparently in a major project like this, there's a meeting every Friday with Borough staff, I guess just to track the progress of the project, Kevin and whoever else might need to be there. And he thought that would be a good opportunity if anyone on the Borough side flagged a problem with the building, it wasn't following a design, to bring it up first at that Friday meeting to see if it could be resolved there. So that's almost like a weekly, a very rapid cycle of checking, which I thought was a very constructive idea. And he also said, you know, he would like, whatever the list of features is that need to be, you know, built the way they're drawn, he would like that list to be finite and easily documentable in drawings. So I've, I've taken the liberty here in this draft to flesh out the list of the things that we would want to make sure the drawings include because we would want to see them built the way they're shown. This is based on largely my notes from our meeting of what people said. And also my observations of the buildings he's building now and what didn't happen. So that, that would be something that by the time we recommend this to council, maybe we want to make sure we have a solid list of things and we want to make sure those drawings include, so. Currently, the list I've come up with includes, can't read this exactly, exterior wall materials and colors.
Is this included in an email or are you just reading off a separate?
This was in the packet that I emailed to you guys.
Is it the conditional use packet or the sub-land and subdivision?
No, it's part of the, when I sent you all the agenda, there were documents attached to it. If I didn't, that's my mistake.
No, it's here, I didn't find it either. Tim was just like, it's attached to the agenda.
It's attached in the.
I have the title, relax.
It's called proposal for conditional use requirement.
Okay, I've got it.
It starts on page 12 of the document, I mean, this legal agenda, this is.
So all of you that are, who are continuing on the commission, I've, I've been sort of encouraged to combine more of these materials and having meetings into a packet that I give you so that there's not a lot of documents flying around and so that when the agenda is distributed and there's something we're discussing in the meeting, it's also available to the public, so that they know what we're discussing. And so in the future, look past the first page of the agenda and maybe things attached to it. Any case, that list is exterior wall materials and colors, stonework features, including but not limited to cornices, coping, lintels, sills, metalwork features, including but not limited to Juliette balconies, exterior railings, window details, including glazing frames and melons. And I admit, I'm talking like I know what I'm talking about, like an architect. Including glazing frames and melons, and I admit, I'm talking like I know what I'm talking about, like an architect, but.
So cool, so good.
Uh landscaping, including plant varieties, now that would normally be on a landscape plan, but in any case. Um, uh lighting fixtures, signage, and this would be exterior lighting fixtures, exterior signage fixtures. Any other design elements incorporated to comply with design provisions of the South Arizona Code. Any other design elements mutually agreed upon by the borough and the developer, so that's what I've listed here. Um. So, um, if there's feedback tonight, that's useful, but when we really need to nail it down is at our. Um, meeting in December, when we are finalizing conditions, that'll be a long meeting, so the more we can do, sooner we'll be back, go ahead.
Of course, I have to get my words in as much as I can at this point, but uh Jim Cornwall was in agreement and I just would like to make the re- recommendation that. When specifying what these particular details, materials, window configurations are. That there maybe is a list of equivalents or substitutions, one or two. You know, if it's not like a four over four aluminum clad wood window, it's maybe there is something that they could use in its place because. Um, those types of decisions do come up when budgeting, you know, making final decisions about, you know, what to build. So the basic recommendation is that there is a list of substitutions to accompany the original specifications. And I think it's just in everybody's best interest.
Um, I'm not sure it is. I mean, I, I think that's.
I think it's on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I I mean, I I fear that that, that just gives a, a developer. Yeah, an immediate potential out right right from the beginning, makes it too easy.
I, and I would like to add to this that. We're really concerned about quality, and I don't see that written anywhere in this, you know, the quality of the materials, I mean, how do you define quality?
It's really hard to do.
I mean, you can talk about quality of material and say aluminum clad wood versus vinyl and the answer is obvious. You could talk about Marvin versus Pella, you're gonna pay more for Marvin, but is it better quality? I mean, how?
Well, let's, let's. So Heidi. This is, this is a big puzzle, right, so this is part of the puzzle, which is. Whatever they wind up specifying, this is just meant to hold whoever the developer is to. Doing what they say they're gonna do. How do you get to that, like what is the material? Um, is a whole nother matter, and I, and I think that um. You know, to share with everyone a conversation, you know, you and Dennis and I had, is that I think that um. What? When there's a project which is seeking the approval of the HARB for demolition, the HARB does have some ability to kind of. Um. Um, review what is going to be put up in its place, right, and that's where the conversation about what the materials, what's appropriate, we come in, do that, review.
Right, which is why I think what Jennifer is requesting may be able to be discussed then.
Yeah.
But I'm suggesting that just to say it has to have stonework features, doesn't talk about. How that's detailed or or why you even care about, you know what I'm saying? I think a big part of what we discussed at the last meeting was about fitting into context.
Right.
That's so subjective and. It it sort of goes along with the conversation we've been having about what fits into a Norbert neighborhood, you know, it has to have a front porch and a pitched roof and all of that, and I'm. And I have continued to suggest that pitched roofs and, well, porches are nice certainly, but pitched roofs aren't necessary, so I'm, what I'm getting at is that what does fitting in mean? It's such a subjective comment and that also ties into the quality of the construction, I mean, we've talked about this before, is that. You don't know what you're gonna get just because you tell somebody they have to design a certain form, that doesn't mean it's gonna be a good quality. So I I don't wanna have to put that in here.
Well, I I think for me, one, one piece that's left out of that list are representative wall sections.
An idea.
Of a sufficient scale.
Right.
That would, that would tell the architects reviewing it.
And that's not hard to do.
Well, not only is it not hard to do, I would suggest that for a project of any size, it's, it's an absolute requirement.
Right.
To do.
It gives us an idea of some confidence that what they're gonna build is gonna be.
Well, it tells us, it tells us a lot of what what we're talking about here, about the nature of the materials, the profile, you know. If you, for me, it would tell a lot about how it fits in with the context.
Well, we can add that in, that was something recommended at our last meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to figure out how to word that, maybe we can just discuss that more or think about it.
Well, the thing about what materials and how they fit in, uh, I mean, that is not typically. The purview, at least in in our environment, it's not the purview of a planning commission or a planning approval, fortunately, we have a HARB and it can be the purview of there.
Right, as far as the look and feel of something.
Right, and so basically.
Yeah, that's why I'm going back to the.
Well, if if somebody is asking for a conditional use or or, uh, you know, or any other kind of relief, I would think it isn't a purview of the planning commission.
Well, except that, except that we do now have a HARB which has to ascertain whether or not the actions taken do. Meet these kinds of goals, the objectives, and they have. Go ahead.
Well, fir- first of all, the HARB only has purview over, review over contributing assets to the district.
Right.
If the project is not a contributing asset, then.
Well, these are.
Then the HARB would never see it.
In this particular case, these are all contributing assets.
Well.
But it for.
Which is exactly why we kept that.
For me?
But for every conditional use application?
I don't know, but I, I don't know that, um. That's not what this is. I I I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I don't think we can solve that now.
Right.
Um, I think, I think the major conditional uses that we see on the horizon are gonna be projects that are under the purview of the HARB, so. Um, how we solve for design quality for yet to be determined projects that are. Um, not, um, like if, say, say for example, well, we already, we already approved that Elwood progress, so that's too late, but if something else like that came along. And it wasn't subject to the HARB review, how would we work with the? I I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the answer should be, right now, I think we have a couple of major things coming down the pipe that we do know will be subject to HARB review. And the HARB will have to make an estimation as to whether or not these are consistent and they have guidelines to use to do that. And I'm, what I'm thinking is, we can kind of piggyback on whatever they approve. We don't have to be the design looker haters, they can be the design looker haters. And we can, through this condition, we can. Uh, attempt to make sure that the designs that are approved, that's, that's being appropriate and acceptable for the context we're building.
Well, we also talked about having an intermediary architecture or somebody.
That's, it's in here.
Who would be, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have what?
An intermediary architect who would look at it, somebody who actually knows what they're looking at.
That's, 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 that's part of.
That's somebody independent of the process?
Somebody independent, I mean, the planning commission isn't always gonna have architects on it or the HARB isn't, oh, I guess the HARB does, but.
Who would, who would hire this intermediary architect?
The HARB.
Okay.
We, we have talked about that in the past, it just hasn't come to fruition.
Okay, what's your comment?
I just wanna make a comment on the, I appreciate, you know, the concern about the look and feel in terms of like scale, context, that kind of thing. But I just want to um comment on the green building aspect of. Um, fitting in, I I'm not sure fitting in is really something we wanna say, I think we wanna be very deliberate about. Not, maybe not saying that because we are putting forward new performance values for thermal envelope. And, you know, pu- no fossil fuels and things like that, which wouldn't technically fit in, cause it's new and forward looking. So, um, I think we need to craft some language, maybe look to HARB for that. HARB, HARB would probably say something like fitting in, but planning commission with the green building probably should not, and I have. Been in contact with EAC, I was at their last meeting, and I am kind of roping them in to, if I'm not here in January, February, whatever. That they'll just, you know, someone will be present to sort of. Keep an eye on those things, um, not that planning commission won't, but it certainly won't hurt to have them on board. And I think that also is reflected in materials, though I don't imagine that the material selection for the buildings is going to be anything earth shattering in terms of. Local recycled, that kind of thing, material might be more, is it probably gonna be more brick or do we know? Um, have they talked about materials, I mean, can we get more specific in the discussion?
They have, yeah. If you go, if you go online, you'll see the, there's a lot of materials on there.
Oh, I mean, I have it.
So the submission has changed?
Yeah, it has, it's pretty extensive online.
I saw it, didn't have anything.
No, the HARB.
Yeah, the HARB applications.
They.
But Jen, to sort of respond to you, I don't see anything inconsistent about having, having rigorous energy standards and a design being contextual.
No, I don't even. I'm just saying. In terms of the, the language that we use to describe.
Yeah, and I I I'm just segueing on to that, it, it's the same thing when you talk about, you know, if, if the developer wants to know what are these lists of, of requirement features, design features. I don't want them to think they can just check off the box because they have a cornice that's of a certain size and shape or whatever, I mean, that's, to me, that, that invites sort of cookie cutter.
No. All, all, all this is, is to make sure what goes on the drawing at the end is built.
Right.
How we get to that drawing is a whole nother conversation.
Right.
And that, I think the appropriate place that to happen is, is at the HARB.
Okay.
In this particular, this, I mean, thi- this isn't meant to say any more than the zoning code already says, how you're to master. Or to make your building, I think that might be a detail along with the HARB, and I'll, I'll share with you all, note I, I wrote to Jen the other day, um. The issue of green building comes up over and over and over again, and uh, there is a path to doing this, but. It doesn't come from just bringing it up, so the, the path to, to having this become an issue that's considered is in our conditional use. I'll say this in case anyone from the A C is watching, um. In our, the conditional use part of the code, it outlines, it outlines general. Um, conditions that have to be met, um, in order for a project to be approved, they're very general, and for the most part, they're not. Qualitative or, they're not quantitative, they are qualitative, right, one of those conditions is. Language to the, to effect that the, as Heidi was saying, uh, that whatever's built has to be compatible and consistent with the neighborhood. We don't have, until we had a HARB, we didn't, and the HARB had guidelines, we did not have. A, a um, objective way of, a close to objective way of looking at that, now we have a close to objective way of doing that. The HARB's review and its judgment. Using the guidelines that the HARB has, uh, can be what tells us whether or not a project is, meets that condition, right? What we don't have in our condition is one that says anything about green building, anything about sustainability or anything about environmental issues at all. And so the first step is to add into that part of the code, where we say here are the things a project has to do in order to get a conditional approval. Is the code has to say something about green building there, and then that gives us the ability to develop further guidance that an applicant must follow. And so that's what gives us the authority to have that conversation, and so I'm urging the EAC to follow that path, to help develop that language that can go into the code. This can be something we can ask council staff to work on next year, um, but right now, asking a developer to do these things. There's not a real context for it and, and, and not a real sound ground, we'd be on better ground if we build, build up that, that kind of. Set of um, uh, requirements in our kind of code. Um, and then it can get hashed out in more, in more detail when a, when a project comes in. And I'm mostly talking about the things that, remember we had that column A that talks about locally sourced materials and this and that? We, we kind of concluded it was impossible to nail down because the construction industry is changing fast and that, that would allow us. To kind of work things out on a situational basis, project by project, rather than having rigid rules that become outdated or aren't necessarily. Appropriate to a particular kind of construction, building type, or what happened, so I would just think about. Putting in our conditional use provisions, statement that one of the conditions is, is, is green construction, and then that would allow us as. Each project comes up to develop a specific condition for that project related to green construction.
Mm-hmm.
That is appropriate, whether it's a apartment building or a mixed use building or a civic building or whatever.
I'll just add for record sake that the challenge is leveraging the incentives enough to make it worth the investment. Uh, in what, in the ask, and that is where the conversation inevitably goes to lead and, you know, tax incentives, et cetera, et cetera.
That's true as well.
Um, so I just wanna put that out there for anyone who wants to take that under consideration.
Okay, um, I've also urged that as well, that's a very constructive role the borough could play, to help people. I think the borough could even consider using some of its resources to supplement these incentives, um, these are paths to follow. Um, I don't think to the world who's concerned about green building, it's nothing you don't have our attention, but these are the paths that someone's gotta kind of navigate. Alright, so, um. E- again, this is, this is simply a condition that would allow us to make sure that whatever's agreed to earlier, whether it's green building or HARB, you know, agreed upon designs gets built the way. And so I, I kind of wanna keep it in, it's a small part of a bigger puzzle, um, are there any other comments about this? Kevin, did you have a chance to look at this revised version? If you're still there?
I'm still here.
Did you have a chance to look at these revisions?
No, I just, no, I just looked at, these are like quarter after six, so I haven't even got through half of this, unfortunately.
And there's a question that you were gonna look into for us, that we.
Yeah, so the conditional use, um, we can't use a stop work order. Um, in any other method other than building code related issues, and I think I mentioned that last time, I was gonna double check that, uh, and, and I confirmed that, so that's strictly a pass, it's a stop work order idea. Comes straight from the building code, so I can't use a stop work order, or at least call that. Um, but I'm sure there's other avenues we could do to, to do a similar type of. Uh, enforcement measure, you know, I do citations for property maintenance, there has to be some sort of mechanism for enforcement that's not called a stop work order but acts in the same way. We just will probably have to get that into resolution.
Right, well, right now we have an escrow payment, which I think was a suggestion you made, um, to us earlier. Um, and then a, a certificate of occupancy.
Well, I mean, technically, I could hold a C O for almost anything. I, I've never liked being in that position, but I guess ultimately we, we could do that. You definitely, you definitely don't wanna rev- revoke a C O, in other words, you have somebody move in and they don't meet lead designer, something like that, and then you have to hold their C O and. Vacate the premises, that's almost impossible to enforce, so, could I withhold it? Yeah, but I couldn't revoke it after the fact, that's not a position I'd like to be in.
Well, of course not, who would wanna do that?
Me, I'm seeking a clarification as someone new to personally, are there any new, are there any other permits that can be withheld or pulled or withdrawn? Aside from C O and, um, building permits?
I don't know.
No, I mean, I, I personally can't, um. Who would, I, if, if somebody went wrong or went. Who would, if somebody went wrong or went sideways on a land development approval, who would revoke that? Would counsel?
I do not know. I don't know, but you know, if some other condition weren't being met, I don't know.
Or demo.
Well, tell you what, Kevin, I appreciate your input in this. Maybe it's just a, maybe it's a matter of if there's a will for this to happen, it's maybe a matter of asking the solicitor if there are further ideas he has. I mean, ultimately what it gets down to is what he's willing to enforce, you know? So it's best, I think, to ask him about these things. I know, I certainly don't know the law. I get a lot of jokes out saying I play lawyer on Monday nights, but but can't, I can't pretend to really know those things. Okay, well, I'll make a few amendments here. I'll add wall sections. I'll cross out the stop work order. And then I haven't said this to council yet, but I will let them know that we're working on this and to expect this as a recommendation. And a few other ideas about the kinds of features that we want to make sure are included in these drawings so that they can be monitored. Let me know. But I think at this point, that's good input and maybe we should move on because it's on the state of plan.
Yeah.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is trying to finish up discussion of use definition updates. You recall, I think last time we talked about recreation, indoor recreation uses and alcohol production facilities. Tim has done a little more research on that, I believe, which I sent around on.
On the brewery, on the alcohol production.
And then today, you sent us a consolidated list of the terms you're working on updating for whenever we have a new zoning ordinance. I think tonight, just to be productive, to start by closing the loop on the two things you've been working on, the recreation venue and the alcohol production facility to make sure we know what we'd like to recommend. Let's do that first, okay?
So because alcohol is its own memo, we'll start there. So what I did was I went into the depths of basically microbrewing, the microbrewing industry and kind of sought out a friend of my family who operates an out of brewery out in Jersey. So it's completely independent of, completely independent of Pennsylvania law. But to understand how she does it. Additionally, I went to several different sites and kind of sought out what kind of, what makes breweries or how much space does a brewery actually need to be successful or to be a functional use?
It's a tough business to visit sixty breweries.
Are you just making a run for it?
I did not visit a single brewery in the process. But so one person, one person actually did sit down and do a study of twenty different breweries, nineteen of them being in the United States and one of them being international. But to kind of get a gist of how much square foot is needed to be successful. And they associated this with barrels. And a barrel is essentially a unit of measurement of production that breweries go to. Oh, and tracking back, I'm using breweries because of all of the listed items that we had, breweries, cideries, distilleries. A brewery is the most space intensive in terms of an indoor, as in terms of an indoor space. So that's why we stuck with brewery as a kind of a feature because we're trying to discern how much space really is necessary. So it came out to be about, so this study in our, my conversation came out to be about 2.16 square foot per barrel per year. So that means for every, for every barrel you produce, you need, or every barrel beer you produce, you need 2.16 square feet to kind of be a functional brewery and have the space for both the retail end and the production end. So we discussed last week that we were thinking forty five hundred square feet as a cap. Now, when reviewing that, it kind of goes, it kind of makes it very difficult for a use to be successful. So you might end up with a much smaller use that may result in a larger amount of turnover where you're not seeing a consistent occupant. And it creates something called a nano brewery, which is either something that's an experimental stage, early stage production brewery or a passion project like my, like my friends, where it's the, where it's, it costs a lot of money to keep up and going. And it's not really a, it doesn't, and it kind of is, what is the longevity of it is really the big question. So with that, we kind of made a recommendation of forty five hundred square feet seems a little small. So maybe push it up to six thousand. But honestly, considering the many regulations that Maryland has regarding frontage, and that's really, that was really the bigger play, not the intensity of the structure itself, but rather how much frontage of the streets would it take up? As long as there is strong frontage, frontage length regulation, you all, you could have a much larger, you could still have a large facility, but it could be easily cast to the back or served two floors rather than just that forty five hundred square feet. We did draw up a map.
Adam, do you know how to make it so we can put that on the screen? It's on, I don't have the attachment.
So while we're having a techno class, what this whole exercise is, is to figure out, the last thing we talked about in terms, we talked about where these kinds of facilities could go. We talked about, we agreed that they should have on and off sales on the premises. They should have food service. But we, the last thing we discussed is that the size, the maximum size should be forty five hundred feet. And after a meeting, Tim took it on himself to kind of ground truth that and look at whether forty five hundred square feet was reasonable for the actual businesses. That's what all that research is about. And what Tim's found is forty five hundred feet, it's a little small. And then maybe some difference to six thousand feet would be, would be more reasonable to get us kind of a viable and long-term business of this sort of.
Nice, a quick question.
Yep.
The 2.16 square feet, is that, does that include if you have a, like a drinking area as well? Or is that just, okay, good, so that's all inclusive?
That includes retail space. Because it's generalized, so most of the brewery survey did have a bar or a space for consumption.
Okay.
What about, I know nothing at all about this subject, but except my old office is down in Northern Luton where there have been several built recently. And it seems like a major component of these operations are the grain silos. Is that within these numbers or?
Yes.
Okay, and again, in my experience of walking by them, and that's about the seventy eight year, they tend to be outside.
Some of them can be large and extensive, but some of them can fit, I will go back to my family friend again. Hers was established in an old laundromat, like an old neighborhood laundromat. Everything is enclosed within.
In the dryer.
In the structure itself. So I mean, it's more than possible, like it, that would have to be a discussion for, maybe looking at it more of a conditional level. But like that would be your main, your bigger producers are the ones getting those large structures.
Yeah, that's right, sort of, okay. But that, those square footage needs are within this 2.16, okay?
This is encompassing, so there's space needed if you want to open up a microbrewery.
Am I having trouble with the screen?
Yeah, I don't know, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm trying to catch the.
I'm trying to get it on wifi.
Yeah.
Adam, if you want to just allow screen sharing in a meeting, then I can share it with people who are seeing Zoom meeting. How about that? One. It's just, it was emailed out this afternoon to the planning commission members. So some of you might have seen briefly. It's just different.
Oh, yeah. Who's gonna tell us?
It just, it just kind of, it just kind of shows what that, what a forty five hundred square feet versus nine thousand square feet versus six thousand square feet versus seventy five hundred would look like.
Right.
It's hard to like spatially perceive.
There we go. I can share now.
We don't have the screen.
No, but I can share with people who are in the Zoom meeting or seeing somebody on the Zoom meeting. I don't actually have it other than in this email.
Okay.
But, okay, so this, some people are looking at this. The pink square is forty five hundred square feet. The yellow one is six thousand. The green is seventy five hundred and the red is nine thousand. So if you want to, you know.
And that, that is the actual.
That's one story, right? So you could say, oh, it can be forty five hundred square feet on the first floor, but then the use may extend to the second floor for offices, for other storage, other things, you know? Certain parts of the use could be located that, but those are just some example squares if you want to think about what the right number is for a moment.
And let me just double check the, what is the yellow? What is that?
The yellow one is six thousand square feet.
Which is what we're, you are proposing we set our maximum at.
I mean, that you could do that or the other option is just don't have a maximum size. Because it, it's like, like the big, the big thing that was discussed at the last meeting is frontage is, we don't want too large of a frontage being taken up by that one use. And as long as there is strong enforcement of the existing regulations for frontage length, then then we're not going to see like a massive brewery taking up an entire block, so.
Unfortunately, in that regard, there is the possibility of building a frontage that's more than sixty five feet.
I guess we could do some sort of, I don't know, the, because we have the lobby, right? We have requirements in terms of how much of a lobby you're allowed to have on a ground floor on Havertard Avenue. And theoretically, if we wanted to do something along those lines, we could conjure up some sort of standard that would say, you know, we have this much going back. But it might just be cleaner to just say six thousand square feet if that's what we wanted to do.
Well, Michael, I'm curious. If right now, there is an exception that in certain cases, a mixed use building can be wider than sixty five feet. And what, what we created was a set of basically urban design requirements that would help break down the scale of that building. Is it, what do you think about the idea, even though the building can be wider, that any potential retail frontage can only be so wide?
Um, I think that's what we were discussing the last planning commission. I guess we were discussing in terms of square footage. Well, I think that would be interesting. That would get back toward to kind of what you and I think several commissioners were talking about multiple meetings back in terms of like your walking rhythm on a streetscape. I guess that would be a way to get back to that. And I guess one other thing, one other way to potentially handle, right, is you could say that six thousand square feet or below, you know, in five A and five B, you're allowed by right. Or, you know, five A, if that's what we're concerned about. And then if you want to do a brewery above six thousand square feet, you can come in for a conditional use. And the condition would be that you have to demonstrate the frontage is, you know, within a certain size.
Or you could, you could accomplish that through a special exception as well.
Yes, yeah.
That might be better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, it's possible.
Yeah, or you could just say anything that's over sixty five feet. It requires a special exception or, I don't know. I mean, this is interesting. It came up because we're talking about this one particular use. But it's an interesting question. Is there a way, even if a building can be bigger than sixty five feet wide, is, could we manage the experience by saying storefront still can only be so wide?
Right, and the business behind several storefronts could be fine. One business with several storefronts of maximum width could be combined.
Hmm, I'm not sure I was thinking that. I wonder if, I mean, we may be talking about something different. I was thinking, you know, our concern all along is you just can't have one big thing that's a hundred and fifty feet. It'll kill the street, right? And so there's a possibility that a building can be longer than that. But would it be possible to say a particular business or storefront can never be more than a certain width?
I think that's reasonable.
That's what I was trying to express, so.
Yeah, yeah. But all I'm saying is that a business could be behind several storefronts.
You're only concerned about the width for first floor front of the building, like street, streets.
Right, 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 right.
Something is behind it or above it, it could be wider or bigger potentially.
Right. A good example is the YMCA building in town.
Yeah, or the theaters.
No, on Havertard, the other side of Havertard.
Think of first when I think of like a big building.
But that's right. Theater is another good example, yeah. The auditorium is behind Rexwell.
Right, and the theater itself is actually behind a lot of different businesses, so.
But Heidi, I want to, I just really want to make sure I understand because I would not support the idea that, let's just say we said the widest storefront could be sixty five feet. I wouldn't, I would not support the idea that you could put two of them together and on the street frontage have a hundred and thirty five foot storefront. Is it, are you serious?
No, I agree. I think there should be a maximum. But I was actually thinking smaller than sixty five. I was thinking if you had thirty foot or twenty five foot storefronts, then you could have two or three of them together to make one store.
I see.
Well, like a good example is kind of the, I don't have the image in front of me, but the, on the map, there's the red one, which it's just purely made up of the, but essentially it stretches into the parking lot behind. But like something like that where that use still is maintained at sixty five feet, but is using that extra space to be productive.
Yeah, that's okay. It's more what this is street fund is what matters, you see?
Right, right.
Like the movie theater.
Right, like the movie theater.
Well, it's not, but yeah.
It's an example of what we're talking about.
Okay, well.
So I could rewrite it definitely if you want to be a special exception. I think, or do we want to approach it from a all retail uses get the treatment?
I'm getting a sense here that this is an idea that applies to all retail uses could be more acceptable. But I think, I think what's gonna have to happen is if we're interested in this being something that applies immediately, it would have to be proposed as a condition or something that, you know, that comes up when this project comes up at its hearing. And so, because no zoning code change would apply to this project and no zoning code change will occur for a long time. So we can think about that in the long run, but I think what I'd like to do in the short. Um, which I think a couple of us could work on and bring back to our next meeting in time.
And that's what I kinda wanted to get from you guys is here's the numbers behind like.
We appreciate that, and I, I'm glad you tried the mapping, because I think, yeah, it helps a lot and see it visually. Um. I think we probably have to set a. Thirty, forty-five, who would, some of the commissioners would like to be involved in that conversation, then we can, like, maybe one or two other people, and then we can bring it back to the full commission. Anyone like to be involved in that? Okay.
I just, I've discussed in those.
Just like how to craft that provision, so we can bring it back in December or.
Um. I hope that the chair can nominate for this.
Okay, I'll do that, man. All right, um, I think that then covers things for alcohol production facilities, um. And then I think you also provided us with type and depth or revised language for recreation uses, but it really.
Um, yeah, re- recreation venue and studio are the two ones. We also went back and looked at some of the other uses that we've discussed previously. But we'll focus on recreation venue and studio to start, and then see where we're at, uh, at once. Um, so recreation venue is an establishment for commercial indoor recreation. This includes, but is not limited to. Spaces for indoor rock climbing, arcades, escape rooms, axe throwing, indoor play and events, and other similar uses.
And that's a new definite term.
Actually, yeah.
Done in discussions last month.
And then this would be, uh, permitted in mixed-use and commercial, uh, buildings in five A and five, or in five A and five B. And would be, uh, a special exception in four D, under the same, um, building types.
And what would the criteria for special exception be?
General. Or.
In fact, that it.
It would.
Okay.
But. The same as.
It would basically fall under entertainment venue.
We're talking about entertainment right now.
Right.
But it can be whatever you want it to be, so we're just, uh, bringing that up.
Right, so that's why I'm asking, like, what, do you guys have ideas about what this, I mean, there's no reason to have a, a hearing for a special exception if there's no criteria that.
There, there's no criteria in here for entertainment venue either, so maybe we wanna consider. Why is that a special exception? We can remove that. That's.
Said currently exists, special exception.
Right, so it's currently in here, uh, an entertainment venue, which is the, you'll probably recall is basically a theater. For, I've reported performing. Um. It just says special exception for criteria, the use is not defined in this chapter, impact on a certain property such as light, noise, dust, and active delivery odors. Um, it will affect, shall be similar to other uses. Right. Um. In four B, any special exception use must be located at a corner. So that is what is already required for entertainment venue, and we've put in recreation venue with this theme requirement, but it wouldn't have to be.
It just says the zoning hearing board may attach reasonable conditions and safeguards, as it may be a necessary implement in the state legal community boundary objective, so. And then there can be specific criteria established for any particular special exception. So I would, I would think if there are any particular issues that we feel we're trying to avoid by having something go through a special exception process, like. When, when it's, why is, why are we asking for something to have more scrutiny and just simply ask for a permit? Um, then we weren't saying that. Um, Michael, you were an advocate of four B for these uses. Do you see a reason for it to be a special exception process, or do you see why that scrutiny would be important?
Um, so, sorry, I had to get out of the meeting and come back in because my audio had cut out. Are we discussing the, um, indoor recreation now?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, um.
Which would be allowed in five A and five B, but would be a special exception in four B.
Right, yeah, I think it makes sense to, to, um, sync it back up with the. Those other use categories that already allow it as a special exception in, in four B. Um, I think, you know, I, the discussion that we had last time, I didn't, I don't have an issue with those uses in four B. I mean, I think four B has historically had commercial uses, uh, to good effect and in, and. And commercial uses that we all love in, in that district. Um, it was more so, I just, I think that. Um, since the two types of uses we were talking about last time seemed pretty different. Um, my only question was as to whether, you know, when, if you went through the process requesting a special exception for one use. Um, and then it was established, and then at some point in the future, it became something that people would perceive to be drastically different, whether there was going to be any sort of. Um. Issues with that, and I think that's largely resolved by, you know, clarifying that those two categories are different. Um, but I think it makes sense that, that, that that use would be allowed via special exception in four B.
Mm-hmm. And what are the kinds of issues or questions that you think that, that extra scrutiny? Under a special exception process would, would want to consider?
Uh, I don't know that it, that, so, I don't know that it would need an additional, um, scrutiny. For this one specifically, um. If, I, I guess, like, the, the way that four B looks like it's currently handled is that there don't seem to be. Um, specific standards for use. Um, for those special exceptions in four B. As far as I can tell, when I was looking at it earlier, it basically said, if you met, kind of like the. The corner lot criteria and a couple other things, that those are what applied broadly in four B to special exception uses. I might have been missing something, but those all seemed applicable to this, and because it didn't, it wasn't breaking out other uses in four B separately for different. Um, I guess, requirements, I didn't, it didn't, I didn't think that there was one needed necessarily in this case, um. I mean, and it may be that, right, I mean, it may be that at some point we wanna look at four B with more of a fine-tooth comb. And at that point, it may make sense to, to kind of break this one out separately, but for the moment, I think in the existing paradigm that we're in. Um, I think that the existing special exception requirements before we kind of cover it.
Okay, any other thoughts about that?
I do have a quick thought on that, and I never realized, since we've had the code in twenty sixteen, nobody's gone for a special exception use that I remember. Um, so I actually didn't know that there weren't those special stipulations attached to the uses, like, like Thomas is asking. And I just know how the board is when, let's say garages are like the number one special exception we see. The board specifically goes through the criteria for special exception, and that's how they determine whether or not they grant it. So I think we're saying, all right, here's a special exception, why are we giving it to? That's what the, that's how the zoning hearing board is gonna ask about it.
Yeah, and the ones in the code seem pretty, uh, objective. I actually think that they're probably a little bit. Too strict relative to, to what has historically been in that area. I think it's like, you're only allowed if you have like a corner lot right now, right? And you know if you have a corner lot. Yeah, um, so they, I mean, it may, may make sense at some point to, to revisit some of those, but for now, they are, I think, from what I can tell, they're pretty cut and dry.
It feels to me like it's an issue to look at a little later. What the special exception, how does that special exception in four B district function? Um, why is it a special exception? What can be accomplished by hearing to zone a hearing board? That makes it worth going through that step, right? Um, I mean, if, if it's simply matter of being in a corner building, you can actually just write that in the code, I would think, right?
That's something can, that can be determined, determined without a special hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so I think for the time being, having it be. Since we're not seeing one, this is not an area where we're getting a million applications, having it be consistent with the other uses is a good idea, but, but it does beg the question, because. Is that overall approach to having special exceptions? Is that, is that the right, way to approach these kinds of uses in the four B district? And that's not something we can tackle today. We can put that on our list for next year. To do that. I mean, Mi- Michael, you are, you're very interested in the. The odd and, um, appropriate circumstances where a business crops up in a neighborhood here and there.
Yeah.
Um, it's a sensitive issue, um, especially on the south side of Norbert. It's a super sensitive issue.
Yeah, it definitely is. I think that there's, I think that it's, you know, it, it's definitely a, like you said, a topic for future conversation, but I think there's a, you know. I, I was reading a book recently, and, and the author made the point that. That when we talk about zoning, people are, people talk about impacts. But the way that we've, the way that Euclidean zoning has traditionally worked actually doesn't really handle it, right? Um, and they, they gave the example of, um, someone who lived above, um, a bakery, and then the bakery had changed their equipment. And it used to be really quiet, and then all of a sudden it was really noisy, and the person who lived above it complained to the municipality. The municipality said, doesn't matter, it's zoned for a bakery, it doesn't matter what the impacts are. And that story kind of, I thought, drove home the point that, that, you know, historically. Um, zoning codes were less about the impact and more about the uses, regardless of what the impacts were. And so I think that there's. You know, when we look at some of these things, I think that some of these tools actually, you know, if, if we can have, if the tools can be more about the impacts to people. Um, then I think there might be a way to actually provide for some of those quirks in our code and, and regulate more for. Um, kind of nuisances rather than, you know, on a strict use-to-use basis. Um, so that's a, obviously, a topic for a future conversation, but I brought it up because I thought it spoke to kind of what you were talking about in terms of.
Right.
There, there's a, there's a way to account for these things and allow for adaptive reuse of our properties in a way that's natural and. And it's form-based, and like our form-based code.
Question, I mean, the issue of nuisance, can that be regulated through business license process or something along that those line?
Well, um, maybe, we do actually, the code does have, um, some nuisance provisions for noise, um, and, um, some externalities like that. Uh, light, lighting, you know, smell. I don't know about that, but I would never complain about that croissant smell. I'm proud of that, that bakery. Uh, but yeah, we do, you know, and, and those, getting the problems of like. You know, how do you enforce those things? But, um. I, I guess the, for, for now, I think the, the point is, is probably, um. Just to be consistent with the rest of the code, we could say this use could be allowed the same place that, that entertainment uses are, but. A, a better look at the relationship of, of how businesses might potentially locate outside five A and five B is. Is, is, uh, a potential topic for the future. Uh, I mean, we had those. One of the reasons for having that possibility, one, I mean, one was we recognize that. Um. It, like, there, there's not always a really hard line between a commercial district and residential district. They lead into each other sometimes. Um, but also we recognize that some of, we wanted to give some of those bigger properties, back, back in twenty sixteen. Particularly some of the bigger houses on Essex Avenue, opportunity to be reused by having an office or something like that. So we didn't know whether people would want them for house. Now people want them for houses, it's not an issue. You know, I know somebody took it up, that one house on Essex that had apartments, and it converted it back to a house, and that's what we see, so. In any case, um, let's just, but I, I think for the sake of, of moving on, let's stick with the definition and, and, and. And we can recommend that it be treated the way other uses are treated now, but like that is something we might need to look at again someday. Um, given the time, um. Michael, do you have steam to talk about housing tonight, residential districts?
Um. What, uh, I'm a, I'm, I can, I can teed up if you want. I'm a little exhausted today. I'm, apologies, I'm not there in person. I got a little bit sick. At the moment, so I'm, I'm keeping you all safe by staying away. Um. But, yeah, I think that, um.
Let me, let me, um, introduce this topic.
Okay.
So, um. In, in the spirit of, of putting on the table ideas that we can talk to council about next year. Um, you know, one of the ideas that's come up a lot in a lot of our conversations for approvals is the way. Our, um, requirements for building coverage and impervious coverage work, um, and the size of buildings that are allowed. Um, you know, in, in some, and when I, you know, leave off like different kinds of issues, like. It's actually not possible always to build a little house in Norbert. Um, that's one issue. Another issue is, um. Uh, there are, are a surprising number of properties that were rendered, um, non-conforming by our zoning code. Um, because they're too small to fit in with the dimensions that our code provides. Uh, other issues are, um. Um. In, while in some ways the code allows for multiple units to be in a house, there's also incentive not to do that, so there's, there's a lot of. Um. Um, things about the, the, the metrics of some of our residential districts that may not be working the way we want them to. And so, um, Michael expressed an interest in looking at that, and what I asked him to do was just sort of. Surface some of the issues that we might wanna look at, right? Not to start talking about how we look at them. When the right answer is, but just like, what are some of the plumbing issues we might only consider in our residential districts? Um, as a, as a possibility of a project to do next year. And so, that's, that's what I, um, suggested that. That he bring to the table. Um. If you have steam to do that for a few minutes, we'll, we can call it off before long.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you this, I mean, it's, it's still kind of, I've been. Doing a little bit of a deep dive, but I'll give you kind of just like a, um, a sense of what I've been looking at. I mean, basically, I've been. Um. Looking through the code, doing a retrospective on, um. Growth in Norbert, both in the recent past and before, to kind of look at how, um, different standards in our zoning code. Um, have led to certain outcomes in terms of what types of housing units get built versus don't get built. Um, what types of, um, housing units we know are generally, uh, more to for, more affordable for folks and other types of housing units. Um, the county has had, has some really good data on that because they track, um, housing sales, so, you know, some of that was based off of sales data as opposed to rent data. Um, and so I've just been kind of trying to, um. Synthesize all of these, um, different, uh. Factors together to, to kind of, um, distill it down into, you know, what, basically just kind of like a, a look at what we know on the ground is happening. Um, because it's, it's things that I think we all have a sense of, but I do think it's important to. Um, because it's it's things that I think we all have a sense of, but I do think it's important to um actually get the. Data on that so that we're all starting a conversation from the same page and the same starting point. Um, not looking at at this point, like what, not looking at specific proposals in terms of. Um, of like this standard should be this and that standard should be that, but just looking at um what are the outcomes we're seeing? Um, and what are the outcomes we are not seeing? And how our regulations may be driving towards certain outcomes over other ones. Um, and then from there. Um, having a conversation about, you know, what we, what's in our our power. Um, to try to manage the growth, whatever growth forces we're experiencing. Towards better outcomes. Um, I think that probably one of the thing, again, this is all going to be, you know, stuff that y'all are keenly aware of, but one of the. Um. One of the major dynamics that we're going to, that we do on a regular basis, and again, this is something you all are aware of. Deal with is the fact that since we're an inner ring suburb, um, our lot, our our lots are. Necessarily going to be all individually unique um and dimensional standards. Um, in our zoning code in terms of some of the lot dimensional standards and the lot sizes, um. Even though they were, even though there was a large overhaul in the in the form base code, some of the. The dimensional standards for lots, for instance, still have the DNA of the older Euclidean code. Um, kind of carried through in them a bit. And and I think that that ends up being problematic. Um, you know, when you're looking at trying to create, for instance, cottages. Or other sorts of uh more human scale um housing, um. You know, it it becomes difficult when you're when you're dealing with, say, a six thousand, you know, by necessarily in order to meet the. You know, the different um dimensional standards, you end up having to do a six thousand square foot lot. I mean, it's. You you the the market's not going to deliver cottage on a lot of that size. So some of those types of issues. Um, and just unpacking, try to hold around this much larger um conversation and what all of it means. Um, so. I know that's pretty general. I've also been able to pull a number of really, really interesting. I think what I'm going to consider to be case studies because we have such a, you know, unfortunately, our our. You know, news coverage of the Barat in recent years has gone down. Um, but in the in the past, there was actually pretty robust news coverage of different. Um, types of projects that had gone through planning commission of Borough Council in years past. So there is. There's actually been some really interesting kind of what I would call natural experiments. Uh, in one case I'm thinking of right now, where you can see a uh, an applicant had come forward with three different. Housing typologies um in successive um proposals. And obviously, one was chosen, but we have. Other examples of similar typologies from the same time period that you can track forward and see how policy decisions. I guess in years past have led to certain different outcomes. And I think that that will, you know, I find that to me informative as to. Um. Demonstrating, well, you know, the decisions we make today may not be revolutionary tomorrow, but over time, those increments will likely lead to different. Outcomes over, you know, a a multi-decade span. So anyway, I'm sorry, that's a little bit broad, but. That's kind of the um, the the type of thing that I've been trying to to look at and get a hold of to um, to kind of. Start off a uh hopefully start off a conversation about, um, you know, looking at some of those. Housing zoning standards. Um, and the good news is that. Because of all the hard work that y'all had done in prior years with the formerly's code. Um, I think it's, you know, the code is starting off from a really good point. Um, you know, there's. In in my, in my private sector job, I've I've dealt with a number of codes that are. Uh, really, really bad. And it's it's really difficult to go in and try to to. Fix a code that is kind of like rotten at its core, but the Norbert's form base code is really good and you and a ton of work has already been done. So I don't think. You know, so that's the part that is kind of heartening to me is looking at it is. Um, the baseline is already pretty good. And I think that probably there's maybe some refinements um to look at going forward, but. So that's my, that's my kind of uh, you know, scattershot. Introduction. So I I apologize. It wasn't a little bit more coherent, but that's what I've been looking at.
Well, what were some of the issues that got you curious about this? I mean, one you mentioned was we. Our code actually doesn't really allow you to deliver small houses and small lots, right?
Yeah, I I mean, I guess like you theoretically could deliver it, but realistically, you're not going to because the land values are so high at this point. Um, that, and we know that the appetite for. You know, million and a half to two million dollar homes is clearly there. And so that's what is going to be delivered. Um. I got, I I I had, I got pretty concerned that um, that if we didn't. If we didn't make an intentional effort to to figure out um. That manner of of incremental growth um within in a way that would work within the um. Within our um. His historic preservation district, right? Because we know that that is a a key component, but if we weren't intentional about. Um, figuring out a way that we could maintain our our history and figure out an incremental growth pattern within that, that. That if we didn't do that, I was concerned that what we're going to end up seeing is just lots of kind of gutting of structures. Downsizing them um from multi-pool units to one unit and then mansionizing of existing properties. Um, all over the um, and that we would lose. Um, affordable places where folks could live down the street from me right now. I mean, there's a. Three plex, modestly sized units in the three plex that's being convert down. Converted, or I guess that one's being demolished and turned into a twin, but each side of the twin is. Massive and probably sell for a lot more than individual units rented for. And so some of. I think those types of things when you're, you know, when we know that the economics of. The Barra as they are right now are driving us towards, you know, basically mansions. Um. You know, that was a concern for me because I just, I know that I I personally have family members who. You know, have struggled to find new places to rent when. Um, when they had to, when their when their other, when their prior unit was no longer available. These are folks that have lived in Norbert for. Um, basically their entire lives. And if they're finding it, you know, harder to live here, then. You know, I think that's a, that's a problem of neighborhood character, right? Um. I may not be the type of neighborhood character that that kind of folk that first comes to mind when folks are thinking, you know, architecturally and whatnot, but I think that. You know, the ability for for folks to continue to live here is is a is a key and integral part of that. So. Um, there's that and and the fact that, you know, I did a first draft of. Of nonconformities and um the level of nonities to our existing code, from what I can tell, was very high. And especially nonconformities are concentrated in. Some of the most affordable types of housing typologies, which are multiplexes. Um. Uh, I think actually the largest um. The largest level of conformity is in um apartment buildings. I did the conformities on a on a, on a, on a unit basis. So. You know, we had, you know, some of the, a a number of the larger apartments were built. All at post-war forward. So they were, they were largely compliant with the the zoning codes at the times that those ones were built. And since, you know. We think about the Elm, you know, that was built recently. Well, you have fifty compliant units right there. So in terms of if you're looking at. Conformities, those ends up, those ones end up being actually pretty conforming. Now granted, they're all conditional use. I didn't consider that kind of aspect of it. Um, but your nonconform, but the multiplexes especially are very, I mean, they're. Most of them are are nonconforming um under our existing code. Um, row homes are. You know, often nonconforming. Um, and one of the things that I found out was that. One of the things driving the nonconformities were lot size regulations. And there was a policy decision from the nineteen eighties that. Um. The nonconformities were intentional. Um, Borough Council in the nineteen eighties made a decision to. Um, raise the lot sizes and the DNA of those lot sizes are still in our code today. Um, the six thousand square foot number. Um, was created in the nineteen eighties, the the. Ten thousand five hundred square foot number, which is an absurdly large lot size was created in the nineteen eighties. I mean, all of those, um. The, I think the. Three thousand or thirty five, whichever one it was, um, was also created in the nineteen eighties. Um, and and the Borough Council at that time did that. In order to prevent people from, um. You know. Doing anything with those structures. Since they were nonconforming, you could continue to have them. But you couldn't come in and start to to pull permits to do something else. Um, and there's some. Coverage in the Inquirer um about that. And uh, and they and they raised the lot sizes significantly. Um, for that purpose. And I think that it's it's not a coincidence that today. Um, the lot sizes still cause large nonconformity issues.
So, sure, we have a large number of. Um, lots, more than we might expect, that are nonconforming because of our lot size requirements. Um. There is, um, and there's also. Buried in our code still sort of incentives to build things bigger than. Um, and and disincentives and maybe even prohibitions about building things smaller. Um, and so those are some of the things we might want to look at to unscramble. That's sort of an interesting legacy that Michael, I mean, we've all been seeing it a little bit, but it's an interesting like how how that legacy got to be.
No, I think what Michael was just developing there is right on. And um. And Michael, I don't, I'm not sure if you're on planning mission at the time. But at one point, we were discussing typologies and discussing tiny house. Which has a small footprint, is typically very efficient. Geared toward, you know, smaller families, smaller spaces, you know, modest, obviously modest outside. Um, the district ordinance, possibly the opportunities for that are really um. Limited. Um, I think the the conversation about the tiny house was uh using it in in part of like a news or. You know, some kind of pocket neighborhood type of development in that sense. Um, but your concern about affordability, I think, you know, coupling the crisis of affordability with. Thinking outside the box on type hall house, housing typologies is a really fertile ground for exploration. And particularly in Norbert, where we are, we do have a heart and we are concerned about community character. And community character is more than just what it looks like. It is the values embedded within the fabric of a community. And if we're looking at what you call, you know, future mansion community, I'm just not sure that that's the Norbert that. Um, we've invested in uh to date. I I'm, you know, obviously generalizing and. Um, I could be wrong, but you know, it's anyway, it's it is a question, I think, in a lot of people's minds.
Yeah, I thank you. I mean, I I appreciate that. And um, while you were mentioning that, I I actually just pulled up, um. I'd done a little uh. Look at the last couple of years and I pulled the ten most affordable sale sale prices. And the ten most expensive sale prices and did just kind of a basic. Analysis of of the two. Again, it was either the last three to five years. And I only pulled regular sales. So to the extent that someone was selling it to a family member, I dropped that out because I assumed that that wasn't a regular sale. Um, so this was basically person to person. And it the the result, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty interesting look of the ten most affordable sales. Interestingly, the median sales price of the ten most affordable was less than three hundred thousand. It's two hundred and twenty five thousand. There were actually a couple. Sales that were in the hundreds, um, which was pretty surprising to me. Now, those were all most mostly concentrated in. Um, in older uh condos. Um, so there there's these con, um, there's a. Older multifamily uh sale property on Montgomery Avenue. Um, the the units are all pretty small, um, but those would would, over the last couple of years, they routinely sold in the hundred to two hundred. Thousand dollar range. Um, and the the median um livable space in the top ten most affordable units was pretty small. I mean, it was nine hundred and sixty square feet, but you know. If if you're looking for a way to afford, I mean, having that option available to folks, I think, is important. And then the median lot. Size or lot area for condos was about fifteen hundred ninety. So one thousand five hundred ninety square feet. Um, and then just in terms of the contrast with the ten most expensive, I thought it was. Pretty interesting. If the median for the ten most affordable was two hundred and twenty five thousand, the median for the ten most expensive. Was basically one point five million um with a livable space of nearly four thousand square feet. Um, and the lot size was just above the minimum lot size for many of our single family units, which is. You know, our a single family unit today, our minimum lot size is six thousand in much of the Barra and. The median lot size for that most expensive typology was six thousand four hundred forty square feet. So I think it kind of, it speaks to. Um, what you were just talking about, um, Jennifer.
So, thank you for that. That was really interesting. I didn't, you know, I didn't know about the history of the lot size.
So what I'm what I'm hoping is maybe this can come up again in a few months. Um, and Michael will continue to look at it, but it can be something that we can suggest via, you know, a project that. You know, one potentially one council member will be interested in it. Um, can we articulate just in that show what the goal is for the project?
Well, I think I think the the goal is to um. I I'll I'll try and. Um, summarize what what I've heard when Michael mentioned that. Is to kind of look at our our zoning code to make sure that we are not unintentionally incentivizing. For large constructions, I'm unintentionally disincentivizing small construction, uh, that we are avoiding. Um, either intentionally or unintentionally creating more um. Um, nonconforming uses that are absolutely necessary. Um. And that we are, um, you know, I think one of the things that was kind of buried in there, we didn't talk about a lot, was trying to get our arms around all these. We leave. We sort of waiting now mega tear downs, tear downs and mega mansions, but now we're just getting mega additions. Um, and so trying to try to. To look to look to see what about our zoning code is encouraging or what could be done to dismention.
So I appreciate that. Those are. Don't any exercises. But if the concern is affordability, I think it might need to be a little bit of a lot of discussion. So, yes, does the zoning code allow small structures? Does the zoning code require lots to be too large? Uh. And so on, the nonconforming uses, although, you know. And then, but I think this issue of, even if the zoning code allows small. Lots, small entrances, it's not going to prevent the mega additions. And so I think if the goal was affordable housing, we need to talk about it. Um. Like what options would be on the table? And then, you know, candidly, would. Only a small community is surrounded by lower areas, so we plan to. Take that into account.
Well, maybe that, maybe it goes that way. But certainly, there are things in our code. You know, we we noticed was when we did, when we looked at one forty six Marion, we didn't have a way to let that lot be subdivided for smaller houses. We had to go and invent it.
No, I I concur that the minimum lot size is large. Um. I just am not sure that that like will produce statistically meaningful numbers of housing.
That's a good point.
I mean, like, you know, it's like that. I mean, like, you know, it's like that Marion house, right? It could have been two, could have been four. I think they ended up with five, you know, it's like uh, I mean, instead of three or whatever. So it's like, it's, it's not uh versus if a thousand square feet is the affordable square footage housing unit, it being traded on the market, how many thousand square foot two-bedroom apartments fit into one apartment building? Just for example. Now, one lot on Montgomery Avenue, for example. So.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that it's all of a piece. And obviously there's a there's definitely things that we need to do in terms of of like income restricted affordable units today, but also from what I've seen in here, the data seems to indicate to me that if you, you know, we've kind of, we kind of missed the boat on some of our, our um affordable housing typologies that were not built in the eighties, nineties and two thousands, um, that would have been coming through the cycle um and, and showing up in our market as kind of existing, gonna call it market affordable, because they're older, smaller units. They, they, they don't exist because they weren't built. Um, and I think that largely they weren't built because of policy decisions from decades past. Um, and when you, uh, when you look at the data from the town, um, the averages there generally signify that your large, single-family detached units, the most expensive, new, the most expensive units. Um, and then about seventy percent of, of that is your single-family attached new, uh, which is, which ends up being about the same amount as your average existing single-family detached. And your most expensive typologies are your single-family attached existing. And then, and the way that the county uses a single-family attached, that's, think anything from two to five, it's, it's your, it's your middle typologies. And your multifamily exists. But in order to get your single-family attached existing, you know, four decades down the line, which is your affordable housing typologies of tomorrow, you need to build them today. Um, and we have, fortunately, we have great examples of all of those from, you know, prior to call it the nineteen seventies. Um, but around that time, we A stopped building those new smaller typologies, and they were all the large, and we stopped allowing people to naturally um convert their own homes. Um, there's a good example on Grayling where there were multiple um multiplexes. And in the eighties, the Inquirer coverage had a family came to the Barra and asked for a variance from their lot and, and parking requirements in order to convert their home into a three-plex that they were gonna rent out two units and the third unit would be for the family. And the Barra turned them down. And so we know today that, that, that that be due to that policy decision, we've got, you know, a, a million dollar home. Um, but we also know what the rents are in the multiplexes on that street. And so I guess it's again, like there's is it going to, are we going to single-handedly, you know, solve the supply crisis um for the region? No, we're not. But I do think that the way in which we grow has lasting consequences in terms of what housing typologies are available and whether those typologies are more or less affordable than the alternatives.
We can make differences in the margins perhaps. They're important to us and our character. So anyway, it's a good question, Adam. Uh, we have a couple of months, we can roll it over and, and potentially frame this up as a possible item to look at. But I wanted to surface it now because it's a big question and it's, it's something that if you have feedback and wanna talk to Michael about it, there's plenty of time to do it. Um, I'd like to, um, I know that there are other things you've brought to our attention, but um.
Michael Gaudini for council.
Be careful now, careful now. Um, but I'm wondering if um you wouldn't mind if we called it quits tonight and uh, um, save our energy for the future, for the December, January meetings, that'd be all right.
That's fine. We'll continue to compile. We can now add in the, uh, the draft alcohol, alcohol beverage, death facility definition and insert that. Take a guess as to where it could be inserted in the table and get, get feedback on how to do it.
Can I say a suggestion that will pack the alcohol? I know we're getting it. It has high value, but.
Oh, it, it was more, it was more along the lines of because it's uniquely regulated by the state and the original definition of the review. This isn't, this uses entirely regularly, but I'd say that's why it didn't carry.
We did update the, I don't know if you remember because I think this conversation was in the name. I don't even time to get around to it. We did update the definition of manufacturing as requested to uh clarify that it, the food or beverage manufacturing isn't included, but that if it has a store or restaurant attached, if you're selling it to people, then it's fine and anywhere that, that store or restaurant would be permitted. Um, so generally speaking, and there was, at that time when we first brought this up, there was a request. I, I had brought up including alcoholic beverage manufacturing under the general manufacturing decision. And there was a request from planning commission to create a new definition that was separate. I'm not, I'm a, that was really you, Todd. So I don't know if we wanna revisit why we have it as a separate, no, you don't wanna revisit that. Okay, great. That's why.
Glad someone here is institutional knowledge.
That's part of why I was excited to bring this back. I'm trying to wrap up all the things that we've sort of partially talked about this year, because that's my last meeting will be next month. Before, I'll still be at MD and D for Tim to go, what the heck's the backstory on this one? Um, but I won't be attending meetings after next month.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm sorry we, we dropped you at first.
That's fine. I mean.
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Are you? Would someone like to second the table? Can I volunteer you a second? Is that major? Okay. All right, all in favor of adjourned?
All right.
Thank you all. Okay, well, get ready for next.
Still bothering people?
Um, it's remain interested.